The following program is the third Tuesday of the month Wapaka City Council meeting.
Welcome, everybody. Before we start the regular city council meeting tonight, we actually have a public hearing, and this is to talk about special assessments for public improvements in the city of Wapaka. And I'll ask Barb, I'll call that meeting to order, and I'll ask Barb to take a role on the members of council that are here at this time.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Henry Velicker.
Here.
Scott Perchatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Corey Nagel.
Here.
Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Barb. So, the purpose of the hearing, Justin, do you mind? Can you just explain why we're holding this public hearing?
Absolutely, Mayor. So, on page two is the notice of public hearing. This is what we're talking about, whether the hearing is tonight. It's our sidewalk program. So, every year, we replace sidewalk, and we do an assessment per our ordinance, which is a 50-50 cost share. Sometimes, we incorporate this into our construction projects. This year, we do not have a road construction project. So, we went around and identified sidewalks in the downtown area that needed improvement. And we do this for a couple of reasons. One, we have to maintain these sidewalks and make sure they're ADA compliant and accessible for many members. We keep them to the proper standards. And then, the assessment is per state statute and also our ordinance.
Thanks, Justin. And you can see a list. It's on page two of your packet, and Aaron's got it up on the screen, too, of the properties that we're going to redo the sidewalks this year and what their approximate cost is going to be to have that done. And that's their share of the cost. At this time, then, we'll take testimony in favor of this recommendation. If you would like to give testimony in favor, step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, limit your time to three minutes or less. Anybody that would like to give testimony in favor of the assessment here for adding sidewalks or redoing sidewalks? Seeing none, we'll take testimony in opposition. Anybody that is opposed to this, again, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Any opposition? Hearing none, I'll declare this hearing closed at 6:07 PM. Next up, we have the regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 16, 2023. It's 6:07 PM, and I will call this city council meeting to order. And as always, we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Barb, you want to read the clerk's open meeting statement for us?
Sure. This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thanks, Barb. Before you forget, because I almost forgot, either turn your sound off on your phones or turn your phones off completely. Don't forget to do that. And Barb, you want to take a role for us, too?
Yep. Brian Smith.
Here.
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Henry Velicker.
Here.
Scott Perchatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Corey Nagel.
Here.
Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Barb. And do you want to begin by introducing yourself as one of the staff individuals?
Barb Nowak, city clerk.
Erin Jensen, city administrator.
Matt Klat, airport manager.
Eric Bailey, library director. Jared Requieu, community and economic development.
Stephanie Reif, finance director.
Justin Behrens, director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec director.
Brian Hosele, chief of police.
Thank you. And of course, Jack Warner is also here, our IT person. He's in the back room at this time. He'll be coming out in a few minutes. All right. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda. And of course, the consent agenda has numerous items on it. And if you're okay with these items on the consent agenda, we just make one motion and approve that, all of the items that are on there with one vote. If you see something on the consent agenda that you feel should be handled individually, then we would move it to the regular agenda. But we would need a motion to move that from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. Anybody see anything? If not, we'd be looking at a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Chestnut, that we approve the consent agenda. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Next up, we have a regular agenda. And again, we do not have any additions. You did see later on in your packet that we do have a closed session that's later in the meeting, actually very close to the end of the meeting, that that presentation will be both an open session and then part of it will be in closed session also. All right. We would need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Move to approve regular agenda.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Hagan, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right. And we have announcements. First one we have is National Public Works Week proclamation, May 21 through May 27. So, that actually starts next week. I'm going to go ahead and read that proclamation. Whereas, public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, public buildings, sustainability, solid waste, and recycling, whereas the health, safety, and comfort of the community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Wapaka Public Works Department is materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, I, Brian Smith, Mayor of the city of Wapaka, Wisconsin, here proclaim week of May 21 through May 27, 2023, National Public Works Week. In the city of Wapaka, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, given under my hand and seal the city of Wapaka, Wisconsin, on this day, 16th day of May of 2023. All right? Thanks. Justin, are we having a luncheon?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Excuse me, next Wednesday.
And it's at?
Our new little building next to the rec center.
Okay.
Unless the weather's really nice, then we might move it to Swan Park.
Okay. So, at this time, council members, if you can attend, that would be great. All right. Anything else for that, Justin?
You hit it on the head, Mayor. Thank you for all the support, and we appreciate all the kind words. And certainly, the citizens in this community and beyond should be aware of some of the things we do and the issues we tackle for their health, but also to know that we're there for them.
Great. Thanks, Justin.
Yep.
All right. Let's move on to public input, then. These are, this time is set aside for non-agenda items. And if there's anybody in the audience, or staff, or council, that would like to give us some information that would be considered public input, just raise your hand, and we'll go from there. Lori, I know you had something.
Okay. So, actually, I'm going to have two. One went into, but this is National Law Enforcement Week, and I would like to take a moment to thank the chief and all of his staff, who do amazing things for the community and give up so much time, and they also dedicate so many other little projects to the community. So, we have a police department we can be extremely fond, just extremely fond of and fortunate to have. And I know there's, sometimes it gets a little, but you handle it, it goes on, and you cover everything that needs to be covered. So, thank you from all of us and from your community. And then, secondly, I would like to acknowledge that Jared made a trip last week to get his master's degree. He drove to Pennsylvania and completed that course, and very proud, very proud of you.
Thank you, Lori.
Yeah, I think that actually, you know. What's that? It doesn't.
I'm red, I know.
Nobody said anything. I think that's the first time we've been embarrassed. And Lori did it. All right. Any other public input? Colin, go ahead.
Yeah, as Representative Weha, I was asked to make a small announcement. Weha, the Wapaka Area Youth Hockey Association, is going to have a brat fry this Saturday. So, if you're out and about in Wapaka and can make it, it will be at the Piggly Wiggly Wapaka, May 20, from 10 to 2. It's $5 for a brat or hot dog, includes a water, chips, and a baked good. As always, the money raised stays within our club to help keep skater registration costs low. And this year, we're adding a pre-order delivery service. If you can have a minimum $30 order within five miles of Wapaka, you can email wehaevents@gmail.com to get in touch with us, and we'll bring the brats out to you. Also, there was, I was also asked separately from Weha to, I guess, note that the Third Annual Wapaka Citywide Rummage Sale is going on this weekend. They have a record number of 77 sales in the area, and maps will be available at Quick Trip, I guess, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, actually, starting at Wednesday at 4:00 PM. And you can follow the Facebook page at the Wapaka Citywide Rummage Sale for a copy of the map, details, and pictures. Thank you.
Nice, Colin. Thank you. So, is it called Weha Eats?
Hopefully, Wapaka eats. Weha just provides the brats.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have our community reports, department ed reports. And I know that Tracy Barron is here tonight, and she's going to talk about the Wapaka Historical Society, and this is under the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network. Tracy, hi.
Hi, thanks for having me. So, thank you again for including an update from the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network on your agenda this evening. Like Brian said, I am Tracy Barron, and I am the director of the Wapaka Historical Society. Thank you for your support of both the society and the network. The Wapaka Historical Society has been a part of the network since the beginning and sees the network as a great way to partner with other arts and cultural organizations while enriching our community. I am here tonight to provide you with a quick look at what the Wapaka Historical Society has been doing in this, our 70th year, and what we have been, or what we have coming up this summer. The Wapaka Historical Society works closely with not only the community and arts and culture organizations, but also the city of Wapaka. We are incredibly thankful for the city's continued support of the Wapaka Historical Society and our mission to preserve the city's history. The Wapaka Historical Society is celebrating its 70th anniversary this year. The Historical Society was formed on April 27, 1953, and over the last 70 years, though our mission to preserve and educate people about our local history hasn't changed, how we do this has. In 1953, we did not have a physical building. Today, we operate and preserve four historic buildings at three sites in Wapaka. We currently preserve and exhibit more than 10,000 objects, with more donated every week. We have also continued our work to digitize our collections and make them accessible to people in Wapaka and around the country. The Holly Center, our main building, is open year-round, and added additional hours last year. Our meeting room is available for rental, and we offer discounted fees for local nonprofits and groups. In the summer, the Hutchinson House Museum and the Depot are open the second and third weekends, along with special events. This weekend, we are holding our annual Family Fun Day at the Depot, an event for all ages. The event is this Saturday from 10 to 2, so you can go get a brat at Weha and then come on over to the Depot, right? And we'll offer tours of the Depot and activities and storytimes with our friends from the public library. To celebrate our 70th anniversary, we are also continuing our capital campaign through December. So far, we have raised more than $175,000 and have completed two capital projects, a new roof on the Holly Center and a more accessible and updated meeting room at the Holly Center. Our third project, renovating our collection, storage, and kitchen area at the Holly Center, will begin late this summer or early fall. We continue to raise funds through our capital campaign with hopes of updating our HVAC system at the Hutchinson House. This project will provide a more climate-controlled environment for our collections exhibited inside the building, while also preserving the building itself, which is one of the oldest in Wapaka. Looking ahead to this summer, we are looking forward to opening all of our buildings to the public. As always, we provide tours free of charge and are also willing to schedule tours by appointment. At the Hutchinson House this summer, we will be hosting our Second Annual Lost Arts Event, featuring demonstrations of vintage arts and crafts, live music, children's activities, and food. This event is Saturday, June 24, from 10 to 4, and is supported by a grant we received from the Wapaka Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. Through all these efforts, the Wapaka Historical Society works to preserve the history of Wapaka and the Chain of Lakes and share this history with others. We continue to grow our collections, make them accessible to the community and visitors, and offer free programs and events throughout the year that are family-friendly and community-minded. We partner with community organizations and work together to reach new audiences. And perhaps most importantly, we strive to increase people's sense of community and belonging through our shared history and love for Wapaka and the Chain of Lakes. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide this update on the Wapaka Historical Society and the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network. We hope you can visit the Wapaka Historical Society this summer, and thank you again for your support of the Historical Society's mission and showing our community the importance of preserving Wapaka's history. Thank you.
Okay. Tracy, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments for Tracy? Go ahead, Lori.
I just want to say Tracy does an awesome job, and it is, I'm on that committee, and I learn stuff, and I just enjoy this so much, and just how much she gets out and involved with others, and it's a great job.
Thanks, Lori.
All right. Tracy, good luck.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the department ed report, and we're going to start with the library. Eric?
Oh, okay. The library's report starts on page 13 of your packet. Okay. So, the library will be, again, holding a community read this upcoming summer. The book selected for the summer will be Braiding Sweetgrass by Robin Wall Kimmerer. Copies of the book have been arriving and are now available. That's thanks to a donation from the foundation. So, we've got a bunch on hand, focused on Native American ecological wisdom and human relationships to the environment during a time of change. The book fits well with our summer reading club theme of All Together Now. Happy to report that AT&amp;T has installed a second new Badger Net network into the library building. It was the first step to adding additional bandwidth to our library's internet service capacity. This is part of an agreement between the state of Wisconsin and AT&amp;T to provide continued fiber data services to the state's Badger Net network. We're very excited last week to be one of the few places that still had internet in town, so that was a very busy day. Update on the exhibit room. Current exhibit is 30 Years of Rotary. If you haven't stopped by to take a look yet, I encourage you to do so. Rotary is a very important organization, very active group within the community. So, stop by, take a look. Excited to report that the next exhibit up is going to be Hidden Prairie. Hidden Prairie is a traveling exhibit from the University of Nebraska State Museum and will actually be the first location to host the exhibit. The pictures look really, really cool. Chris Helter, the Nature Conservancy's Director of Science in Nebraska, has really put together an amazing collection of photographs that tell the story of one square meter of prairie over the course of a year. We'll have high-quality, hands-on pieces as well that will engage our younger visitors when they come in. Okay. We have our Como Say Dise Spanish Conversation Group that has now met three times and has had a total of 11 visitors. So far, they've all been English speakers, looking to refresh their Spanish, which we have been doing and helping with. But it is exciting that we have a community that's ready and eager to converse with our newest residents here in Wapaka. We've recently been in communication with Ann Collins Reed at the school district to help us determine how to best connect with and work with the new residents here that might need to expand their language skills. And lastly, we've got some exciting STEM programming that's coming up. Staff members Paula Reidy and Liz Kinnear have teamed up for some STEM and citizen science activities in the exhibit room this, over the summer. There will be a PBS Kids cohort that Paula has been working with, providing great resources that will engage families around the characters on PBS, such as Nature Cat, Molly of Denali, Wild Kratts, Super Y, and more. Paula, along with staff member Taylor Wilcox, also had a chance recently to expand their STEM knowledge and programming ideas by virtually attending a STEM programming, I don't know what you would call it, institute, or what they refer to it as, but it was put on through MIT. So, that was very exciting, since it's hard to find more on the science and technology portion of that than MIT. So, they spoke highly of that when they returned. On that note, that's my report.
Eric, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments for Eric? Go ahead, Colin.
There was an email that was shared with us, city council, in your report, and I think it makes sense to let everybody know how well-liked and impressed people are with our library and how well that it's doing here. And if you haven't had a chance to read it, you should read it, and then keep it up, is all I wanted to say. It's really neat to have people say how great the library is doing it. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Colin. Any other comments? All right. Let's move over to Jared.
Thank you, Mayor. My report can be found on page 19 of your packets. So, building and zoning permits continue to come in. We have had quite a few commercial permits come in, so we're juggling those and trying to make sure we get all those figured out the best we possibly can. They, of course, take some time with just reviewing plans, things like that. So, we appreciate everybody's patience with us and apologize for any headaches that we may cause anyone. Sorry, Justin. We continue our downtown partnership meetings. I think these are going very well. We have a meeting coming up on May 18, so just this week. Some great topics. We did get some input from some of the members, asking that we discuss some topics that have been on their mind. So, great opportunity to really get down in the weeds and hopefully talk with the downtown business owners and see the different things that they're wanting, that they're seeing in their downtown, and I look forward to just making our downtown better. The Economic Diversity and Resilience City Strategy Report that we've worked on for most of last year, we are hopefully, I guess, all of last year, we are hopefully wrapping that up here come May, or end of May. I know we've been on our consultant, just about getting everything kind of tied up and completed in final report form, so that we can have a final meeting and get that to you guys. So, super excited about that. Again, tons of great developments happening. The Danes Hall is still looking to do their plaza. Word is that they are looking to start here in the summer and hopefully be done by the end of the year, so that'll be great. We have the multifamily development going up on Division Street. They're currently deconstructing. We'll hear more about that later in this meeting. Continue to work with the Foundry on their housing development. Our River North developer, HDG, on their multifamily that they're heading. So, a lot of great developments coming forward. Reloguing and wayfinding signage, continue to work with the Chamber on that. That includes signage banners, as well as looking to relogo and rebrand some of our vehicles. Continuing on code revisions, as you will continue to see in this meeting. But lots of things to keep our department busy, so happy to take any questions if you guys have any.
Thanks, Jared. Anybody have any questions or comments for Jared? All right. Thank you. Next up, finance director, Stephanie.
Okay. My report can be found on page 21 of the packet. I am happy to report that the CDBGCV reporting has been completed. So, we did, we had that public hearing early, late end of year, just stating that we are finalizing that and ending it at the end of 2022. So, all the reporting has been completed. We're just waiting on our final payment to be made. We're expecting that to come through the end of this month. I also did get the ARPA expenditure report for 2022 submitted as well. To the girls in my department, Shelley's been working closely with Justin on creating a two-sided utility bill that includes more of our legal disclosures, as well as the city directory. The efforts align with the goal of transparency, as we highlight a lot in our department. Kate did host the first annual seasonal onboarding event at the city hall to get our new and returning seasonal employees all registered and ready to bear off to their new seasonal jobs. It worked really well. She had a huge turnout. It was quite a busy and loud afternoon with all the young teenagers in the office, but was really good to see. So, it was hats off to her, because it was a lot of planning and a lot of organization. She did a really good job. I had the opportunity to attend the Municipal Treasures Association of Wisconsin Spring Conference. It's a mouthful. Just this past month, actually. It was a really good event. We had Justin Baird, our finance, our finance team, there as well, reporting all of their fun stuff that they're doing, all the stuff that they're working on. We did get to meet another finance advisor of ours that we will be working with, Adam. He was also on site today with Justin, and we got to meet them in person, so that was pretty exciting. I also was appointed at that conference to be a chair member for the 2024 Spring Conference, as well as taking the role as the District Eight Director for the MTAW Board. So, I'm excited to join the Team of Treasures with that. I met a lot of really nice people there, who I think it's going to be a really good collaborative team event and just aiding in my training. So, that's, that was exciting. And then, lastly, our April Wellness Committee event was rescheduled. We will be holding that next week, Monday, at Swan Park at 5:00, and we encourage everybody and everybody to join. It's, it's, we didn't get to do it last month. It was kind of crummy weather, so we're still looking to honor Earth Day by cleaning up the park and helping our park crew, so they don't have to have such a... and helping our park crew so they don't have to have such a busy day on Monday after all the baseball and everything that goes on there. So if you guys are willing to and wanting to, we'd love to have you out there. Bring your gloves. We'll supply the garbage bags, but it should be a fun time. That's it.
Thank you, Steph. Questions, comments for Steph? All right, let's move over to Mr. Behrens, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. My update is on page 22, or starts on 22 through 26 of the packet. Usual, starting in wastewater, this update has quite a bit of sludge management in it. And sludge is kind of what it sounds like. It's a resulting material, which can't really be treated much more. But we do have to do something with it, and it has to be tested. And then the end of it is it's hauled away and applied to farm fields. Not any field that you would eat food off of, but other ones. It's a pretty big expense, so it's something that we track and we're concerned with quite a bit. We actually accepted 55,000 gallons from the Wyegua Treatment Plant. They had to take some of their equipment offline for maintenance, so we agreed to take it on at five cents per gallon, which it costs us three cents per gallon to get rid of. So it covered our costs, plus a little treatment and a little of our time. So when the sludge sits in our sludge holding tank, it separates. And the very top is called supernatant. It's very potent, but we're able to trickle that back through the plant. And it stresses the plant a little bit. As long as we're careful, we can treat that much. And what that does is reduces our hauling costs at the end of the season. So if we can get the volume out, that's what we get charged in, or charged for, excuse me. Streetside, I like to mention the tree planting this year, which we started, or we did on May 2nd, because it was slightly different. We had a little more assistance from other people. So the Rotarians helped out, Henry and, what was that gentleman's name again?
John.
John, yes. They took three trees and planted them out at the Eco Park. So that was great. Jake Waller helped assist with some of the staking and the wrapping and mulching. Our wastewater department decided to buy nine trees and plant them at our lift station in the industrial park. So planted, they won a wind block. We also got a little benefit from some aesthetic appeal out there. So a win-win for everyone. And then I got involved this year, and Jake and I planted six trees at the airport. And luckily for us, we put our order in a little late, and we got trees much larger than we expected because the sizes that we ordered were out of stock. So we had to get, they swapped them out with bigger ones. So we got some giant trees out at the airport already, so. On the water side, our Water Main Project for Michigan and Harding is finally complete. The asphalt was just topped off earlier today. We have to test our new hydrants, so we replaced one and then put in a new one. And our pressures and our flows in that area have improved significantly. So obviously, that was a benefit we were looking for. And we saw it in our results with those testing, with that testing. Our Consumer Confidence Report is available. This is our annual drinking water report. It is published in the newspaper, is published on our website. Go check it out. There's a lot of things in there. It's good for everyone to know what they're consuming. And this is something that we have to do through EPA and DNR. But we take pride in it, and we scored very well again. The four operators in the water department rebuilt three hydrants. So when we do our road projects, our water main projects, we are able to salvage some of our hydrants that are somewhat old, but not quite old. And this is what happened here. Instead of buying, or having to buy three brand-new fire hydrants, they were able to take parts from some old ones we salvaged off of old projects. And with everything else, it's gone up. Each hydrant is about five grand. So for them, just to, just to do the work and swap out those parts, saved the water utility 15,000. Facility side, Jake is doing an excellent job. His background with the fire department and inspections is coming up big with the exit lighting and even the inspections that are routine or mandatory here at all of our facilities. So we are governed by state statute that we have to do these inspections. And with his background, he's able to communicate a little better with, with the people that are coming to do it. And he's going to start looking at those contracts to see if we can make them a little bit more efficient. So hopefully, we can find something there and save a little, save a little cost. Finally, at the bottom, our Public Works facility. We had the open house on, on the 21st of April. And to be honest with you, there wasn't a whole lot of attendance. And I took that as a pretty good thing. A few comments and questions, but nothing major. We have started moving some dirt on that site. And a reminder for everyone here, we have the groundbreaking ceremony tomorrow at 2:00 p.m. with a rain date that we probably won't use for next Wednesday. Attached to this is a few documents, and I apologize. I attached some photos, and they're huge files. Next time, I'll do better. The color chart here is a potential change item. This is from Myron, tracking the changes with the project to whether it's a spec change and then also a cost change. So we've had some minor changes. The big one was mainly to a structural change that was recommended from the metal building manufacturer. So that added around $8,000 to our project. All in all, our contingency is, is well intact. So it's there for re-review, and if you have any questions on it, feel free to ask. Hopefully, that doesn't freeze up when you scroll through those pictures, Aaron.
They're working.
Okay.
Thanks, Justin. Anybody have any questions for Justin? Comments? All right, hopefully, if you can attend tomorrow, that would be great. If you could meet out at Hopper Corn Field tomorrow, 2:00. All right, next up, Parks and Rec Director, Laura.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so we'll kick off talking about Lakeman Field. I wrote a press release last week. We have a photo from the Lakeman baseball team because they donated $10,000 to our project. So that's going to kickstart our campaign. We also printed out donor request letters today to send out to the Lakeman veterans and some businesses. So we should get those mailed out yet this week. Swan Park Project is coming along very nicely. If you get a chance to drive out there every day, something new is happening. And right now, we're really kind of contingent on that Chippewa Falls building by the Huffcut Company. It's the bathroom building. And, and they are going to bring it in as a whole building, not in, not in parts. And then they're going to drop that down. Once that's done, they're going to be able to finish the concrete. They're going to be able to finish the surfacing on the playgrounds and get the splash pad pieces up. So all of that should happen at the very beginning of June. Still aiming to open up before the end of spring, so that's our goal. And we received a $2,500 Rotary Grant from, or a grant from Rotary to help offset the cost of our Wapaka Area All-Stars. So any individuals who live outside of the three townships that pay in and the city of Wapaka, who ages 5 through 18, who have special needs or mobility issues, they will be able to hopefully still be a part of our Wapaka Area All-Stars Program, which is our adaptive and inclusive rec program that we're introducing this year. We did a lot of stuff in April. Hired, hired all of our part-time staff, had baseball and softball tryouts many nights in a row at the rec center, had draft night. We, Steph and I met quarter one budget, and I spoke at the library lunch and learn about Parks and Rec. We just got out our, this afternoon, we just got out our Fall and Winter Program Guide to the printers. So that should be coming in in a few weeks, so we can get that out to the school district before a school is out. We, through a very wonderful collaborative effort, we got movie equipment through the city. And we're really excited to announce that on June 23rd, which is a Friday night, we are going to show a movie at dusk at the airport. So mark your calendars, June 23rd at dusk at the airport. This isn't in the report, but I really want to talk about what's happening at the senior center with cardio drumming. They have been going out all over the community this month. And they have actually gone to the WLC twice on the last two Fridays, and they're going to go again at the end of this month to provide cardio drumming opportunities for all the music students. And my daughter's in fourth grade. All three of my kids had an opportunity to do it. But my daughter mentioned that it is the most fun that she's had in a long time, and that her, the fourth-grade boys in her class, she's never seen them that happy. And we had an opportunity to also provide cardio drumming to the Kahoots Day Service this week. And I had an opportunity to talk to one of the leaders. And she said, "They have been smiling and dancing the entire class." And they're headed to the middle school this Friday. So lots of amazing cardio drumming opportunities in the community and just bringing a lot of joy to, to all ages. Josh and Casey have gotten our parks ready to go. Everything's prepped for baseball and softball. Swan Park looks beautiful. Lakeman looks beautiful. All of our baseball and softball seasons kicked off last night, and it was really successful. Another wonderful collaborative effort, we got the boardwalk completed at Swan Park thanks to the Wapaka High School Tech Ed Class run by Erin Strebe. And the, the boys did, the high school students did an incredible job of staining and cutting those boards over the winter and then coming in on May 2nd to install them. And if you get a chance, go ahead and walk over on the west side of the sledding hill and check it out. It's beautiful. So a few things coming up. We just had our Eco Park Planning Meeting last Wednesday, and it was a huge success. Lots of wonderful ideas coming out of Eco Park. Greg and I had a chance to meet today to, to talk about some grant ideas so we can keep enhancing that park. This weekend, adding one more thing to your calendar, we have our Friends of Wapaka Parks Workday from 9:00 to 12:00 in the morning. And at the same time, the Walk for Hope will be happening at, at Swan Park. Brainerd's Bridge is where the, the work day is. So sorry if I didn't mention that. If anybody's interested in coming and hearing more or adding more to our Wapaka Area All-Stars, our next meeting is the 23rd at 5:00 p.m. And if anybody wants to come see, a lot of third graders out at Eco Park learning about environmental issues, come out on May 26th. That is our rescheduled date from May 5th due to weather. Thank you.
Busy, Laura. Questions, comments? Yeah, Dave, go ahead.
I have to comment on the Lakeman thing because I was a 50-year member of the Lakeman. Player mostly, but manager for majority of that time. I was not treasurer, so I'm not sure exactly where the treasurer ever was. We gave, they voted to give $10,000 to kick off this campaign. I don't think we had $10,000 in our account ever, up until more recent years. So I know that was more than half their current budget, or checkbook. That's more than half. And none of the players are paid, none of the managers are paid. The Lakeman themselves buy all their equipment, pay the umpires. The umpires get paid, but it comes out of the Lakeman itself. And the rest is covered by city umpires for Legion and Be Ruth and stuff. That's a significant part from the Lakeman to donate, although it doesn't look like a big deal when you're talking 150, 60,000. But just so people are aware of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Yeah. If you, I've said this numerous times, but if you have not been to a Lakeman game, and usually I talk about their Sunday afternoon games. They start 1:30, 2:00, 1:30. They also play some Wednesdays and some Fridays, too. But Sunday is, it's the, it's great baseball, and it's very inexpensive, including the, the food and the drink there also. And you see great baseball, at a great, at a great field that's only going to get better. So, yeah. Thanks, Dave. Laura, thank you.
I had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I drove by the, where the splash pad is going to be, and I saw that Community First's name was emblazoned all over it. And I, did they buy naming rights to it, or what, what was the situation with that?
Yes, they, they paid the amount that would get them the donor arch, the donor recognition arch. And some of our other major contributors will have, Farmers State Bank will have their logo on the bathroom building because they gave, they gave more. And then some of the other ones will have their logos on the seat benches that are going to go around the circles. And then we do have a donor wall for everybody else.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? All right, let's move on over to the Police Department. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. My report can be found on page 29. We got our last flock camera installed in the city, so we have a total of three of them in right now. And those are the license plate reader cameras. And those allow us to track if there's any missing persons, stolen vehicles, Amber Alerts, anybody that's at risk for protection orders. If one of those vehicles go by the cameras, it'll send us an alert within about 15 to 20 seconds to let us know that that, those vehicles are in the area. And I ran some numbers real quick at the beginning of the month, and it was hard to believe. Before we got the one on Fulton Street in, it was 172,226 plate reads in about a month and a half. So, and we're getting good quality pictures. So really happy that's up and going. Our drug takeback was a huge success. We took in 71.8 pounds of medication. That's the most that we've ever taken. On an average, it was usually about 60 pounds. And then the last few years, it got a little bit lighter. But this is just a great way of the general public that we're just getting rid of the medication in a responsible way. It's not going into our wastewater. It's getting disposed of the way it should be. On Friday, we have some exciting news. Garrett Colbert's going to be graduating from Fox Valley Tech. He'll be a new officer for us. And he's had to complete 720 hours of training at Fox Valley Tech. Some of the things that he has to do is the foundations of professional policing, some legal contacts with the laws, tactical skills, patrol procedures, investigations, physical fitness. We're excited that he passed his run. They had to run so far in a short time period. And then officer wellness and some integration exercises, some practical exercises. And what he's working on right now is final skills evaluations. So they get a bunch of scenarios that they have to go through with the instructors, and it's a pass/fail. So we're excited for this Friday. I attended it earlier back in April down to Madison, met with the legislators and senators about some upcoming bills and everything that we're supporting that. It was, the chiefs of association feels they were very strong. One of the things is increasing our training funds. Right now, we only get about 160, we get $160 a year per officer for training. When we send an officer to, to training, on an average, they cost from 300 to up to $900 for a training. And that doesn't include any travel costs or meals or anything. So they're asking that, that to be doubled. Some of the other things that we addressed was some Chapter 51 emergency detention crises. When people come into crisis and they go to the hospital, sometimes we're sitting there eight, 12, 24 hours. And we want to get those people to the hospitals as fast as we can so that they can talk to the appropriate people. So we're making a big push for that. And then just getting some more funding for district attorneys and officers. Just that we're just such short staff right now. It's really hard, hard to find good people. We've been very fortunate in the Wapaka area that we found that. We also had an audit done by the Wisconsin Department of Justice Juvenile Programs. They come in, anytime that we bring a juvenile in the building, there's certain protocols that we have to follow, log sheets and everything that we have to keep. So they went through everything with that, and we didn't have any problems. Everything was real good. They checked to make sure our policies are up to date. So we're all good on that. As for what we did during the month of April, we handled 647 calls for service. Three of them were mental health holds. There were six domestic abuse arrests. And then we did make some arrests from the windows that were broken in the downtown area. If you didn't know about them, there are two places that got broken. And we used the city cameras to help us solve who broke those windows. And there was thousands of dollars worth of damage. So once again, the cameras in the downtown area assisted us in solving those crimes. And then the last thing I wanted to hit on, and Laura talked about it in regards to baseball and softball starting. We always receive a lot of speeding complaints down in the Swan Park area. People are trying to get to practice or late for a game or whatever it may be. If you haven't noticed, there's been a lot of squad cars down there. We're doing that to try to get people to slow down. Everybody just leaves a few minutes' area. There's a lot of kids that ride their bikes going to Swan Park. And the last thing that we want is somebody to get hit. So we're doing a lot of enforcement in that area when baseball's starting here in softball. That's all that I have.
Thanks, Chief. Do you want to recognize one of your officers that got a local award yesterday?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Paul Shabelski. We had, celebrating National Law Enforcement Week, and Paul Shabelski of our department received a life-saving award. We were looking for somebody, and fortunately, he found the individual. The individual was actually hanging himself in the front yard, and Paul, with his quick action, was able to get out of the car. And one of the other nice things is Paul is very tall, so he was able to reach up, take a knife out, and cut the person down because they were unconscious. So, and this just happened about a month ago. So he received a life-saving award for that. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Chief. Anybody else? Any comments or questions? All right, we're going to move to Josh, who's IT. We'll pack online Win TV. We'll pack a radio FM 96.3, and we'll pack a free Wi-Fi.
Well, that's quite the introduction. I haven't talked much about this, but in the background, I'm working on redoing the city website. It's not going to be a vastly different look when it's done, but I'm changing hosting and going page by page because there's little things that get out of date. I'm updating pictures because there's stuff on there that's not up to date. You know, this is something, every three to four years, I end up really doing a deep dive and catching all this. And, you know, standards change on websites. More people are scrolling on their phones than on a computer. So there's some usability stuff. So that is in progress. It's very tedious. I'm hoping in several weeks or about a month, it'll be switched over to the new one. So you're not going to go on there, and it's not going to be a whole new design. It'll be tweaked, but that's coming. If you pay attention to the lobby, we used to have a bulletin board out there for community events. We've computerized that. That allows us to set start and end dates on it. It makes sharing content on other displays easier, kind of makes the lobby look a little bit nicer. So there's two TVs side by side, one more with city government info, the other with community info. You know, there's a lot of outdated stuff out there, and all the clutter just kind of looks a little nicer. So that's an enhancement in the lobby. Opaquah Online's working through a grant project. We are upgrading four back halls to high capacity, which are about eight grand apiece. We've got two of those done, and we will be, we're in process of ordering the equipment and the FCC licensing for the next two. We want to see how the first two work to kind of dictate which vendor we went with for equipment. And those really made some nice enhancements, the two that are done so far. And then we did electronics recycling. In April, we collected a little over 17,000 pounds at that event. Probably the smoothest event we've had, no issues. Everything moved through pretty quick, pretty evenly. We've been doing this event for 11 years. We've done it 15 times for a total of 360,000 pounds. So it's all stuff not going in the landfill or in the ditches. That's all I've got.
All right. Thank you, Josh. Questions? Comments? All right, let's move to our city clerk, Barb.
Thanks, Mayor. My report is on page 36. I've been working on updating the history book and the city directory after the organizational meeting on April 19th, getting the new committees and boards in there, and the updated information for the people on the boards. Hope to have that completed after the June 6th meeting, totally updated after everybody's appointed. I set the, or we set the board of review. Normally, that's held in May, but with this being a revale year, that will, the roles aren't ready yet. The assessment role is not ready. So we just have to meet to adjourn at a later date, which will be sometime in September, October. I'm not quite sure yet. Mailed out all of the license renewals, so we've been getting a lot of those in the office. And you'll see all those next month at the meeting for liquor license and all those. And that's about it.
Thank you, Barb. Comments? Questions? All right, Aaron, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Smith and council members. And my report can be found on page 37 of your packet. And I'm just going to hit on a few things. Just wanted to say a big thank you. It's been said a number of times, but the National Law Enforcement Week, it was a really nice luncheon. Chief Hozell did a really nice job with some presentations and that award and other things. It's great to see the families there, not only the officers, but also spouses and I think even some parents and such. So that was very nice. Justin, since we won't be here next week, at least I don't think, same thing for National Public Works Week. You guys obviously do an unbelievable job, just like the police officers. And I'm looking forward to that luncheon now as well. Flower fundraising, wanted to give a quick update, very positive. So as we know, late April, we approved a contract that actually was over budget by a decent amount. It was kind of the direction of council to fundraise at least $15,000. And within two weeks, about 11,300 of that 15 was secured. One big contribution was from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, gave $10,000, and then a couple of other, two 500s, I believe, and a 300. And to be honest, I feel like we're kind of just getting started because there's other inquiries. So it's awesome to see that others value that program enough to actually give financial support to it. So that's been great. Audit update, we do, Stephanie and I kind of have what I would say is our final, kind of like final go-through meeting of all the results of the 2022 audit. And that meeting is to make sure that just all of the city strategies were basically implemented throughout 2022 and the general fund, and everything is impacted as it should be, and there's not inaccuracies. So as soon as that's done, then the audit report really can, we are very, very close to having that generated. So look forward to sharing that with everyone soon. I'm looking forward to presenting kind of like a city update. I think there's a lot of positive things to update. You've heard most of it from our department heads here, but we'll be presenting to Rotary on May 31st. And since I'm putting a presentation together, I'll probably present it to you guys, too. Might as well get some legs out of that. Leadership Series tomorrow. We have Dan Naylor. Dan is a very, very seasoned speaker and facilitator. He's going to be speaking on conflict management tomorrow with our leadership team. So a big thanks to Dan for putting together that presentation, and we look forward to hearing from him. Our new committees, which-
He has a lot of experience from the kids that he grew up.
Yeah, yeah. For those who don't know, one of his daughters is in the room. So also, the new committees, which we'll talk about later in this meeting, was able to have a good conversation with our department heads today on setting the first meetings. Really, we're looking at June and July. The monthly ones will be June. The quarterly ones will have their first meetings in July. Talked about potentially having one big orientation meeting. This is a, you know, it's a big change in kind of how we have our governance set up. Yes, they are advisory committees, but it's different than we've done it for a while. And we kind of decided that after that, you know, we could go the orientation meeting route, or I could just kind of attend each of those first meetings and kind of give a, hey, this is kind of the purpose. This is the intent. This is how it ties back to the strategic plan, so on and so forth. And I think most department heads thought that that was the route to go. So I'll look forward to attending at least the first half hour of each committee, and the ones I'm on, obviously, the whole thing. Really exciting news, weed tax credits. You guys probably saw it in the article, or in my last newsletter. But we were informed that we received weed tax credits. And when I say we, not technically us, MF Housing Partners, applied for a project within the city. And we look forward to continuing the conversation on where that could be located and moving that forward. It does take a while. Those are complex projects to finance. So don't expect units to go up tomorrow or this fall, but hopefully by 2024. And then May 31st, we're just going to be having some staff trainings on respect, harassment, diversity. And those are, not to say that we think we have problems in those areas, but they're always good refreshers for all of our staff, and it certainly protects the organizational, or the organization from anything that may happen. So look forward to that on May 31st. And I think that's all, Mayor. And even if it's not, you're probably sick if you're-
No, 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 no. Keep going. Anybody have any questions or comments? Jared, and maybe it's too soon, but I see Greg in the room, so that made me think about it. But, you know, one of the, you know, we have a great downtown Main Street. We have one project that still needs to be finished, and that's North Main Street by Rassism Park. And you want to, do you have anything that you can report on that? Or not?
Yes. So they are looking to start in summer, this summer, I think you said, June or July?
They would be the Kohlers.
The Kohlers, the Danes Hall owners. So what kind of happened with up there is, actually, a portion of their building was always in our right-of-way, so it was encroaching with the whole Main Street reconstruction project. It was planned to kind of make that north main alongside the Danes Hall into a plaza. So worked with the Danes Hall to seek out grants. We are still waiting to hear back from some of those. We hope to hear from one of them, one of the big ones, very soon. We have our fingers crossed. But we combined all of the lots, and then they reached out for quotes for construction to make it into kind of a more naturalistic plaza, public use, picnic tables, things like that. And so either way, well, they are looking to be moving forward. But again, we hope to hear back from one of those grants very soon.
Thanks, Jared. All right, anybody else? All right, let's move on in the agenda then to unfinished business. We have some ordinances here. We have proposed changes to the city ordinance, Chapter 1.03. This has to do with appointed officials and 1.04, which is the boards and commissions. And this is actually our second reading, so hopefully you're prepared to vote on that tonight. And I'll turn it over to Aaron.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Smith. This starts, where does it start? I believe page 81. Thank you, Mayor, of your packet. And as the mayor mentioned, this is the second reading, but it's actually the third-ish, because we brought back a first reading twice, when we added the Inland Waters Committee. So we're looking at the Sewer and Water Utility Board, the Inland Waters Committee, Personnel Committee, Emergency Management Committee, and the Public Engagement Committee. And I want it, there is some very non-substantial items that got changed even in this reading. And it was after some input I got from a council member, I thought made a lot of sense. We changed the Inland Waters Committee. Instead of meeting monthly, quarterly felt much more appropriate. So that got changed to a quarterly meeting. And then we did have two citizen-at-large members appointed by the mayor. We still do have two citizen-at-large members appointed by the mayor, but one will represent the Friends of Mearon Shadow Lake, as they've been very, very active in this conversation for a long time. Felt it appropriate to have at least somebody represented there. And then there will be another one as well. So other than that, you heard me talk about it in my report. If there's any questions about these, I'm happy to answer them. And if not, I guess we would be looking for a motion and looking forward to meeting for the first time in June and July.
All right. Anybody have any questions, comments? Did we have any comments from the public, Aaron?
Excuse me. No, we did not, Mayor.
Okay. We'd be looking for a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion by Hagan.
Second.
Second by Porczatsky that we approve the proposed changes to ordinance number Chapter 1.03 and Chapter 1.04. Any further discussion? Barbara Calderon?
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right. Aaron, thank you. Next up, ordinance number 022023. This is an amendment to Chapter 17.153 of the RC or Resource Conservation District. And this is also the second reading. So Jared, you want to just tell us?
Thank you, Mayor. So this one starts on page 89. This is the second reading. So we'd look for a approval if the council agrees. This district or this zoning change is looking to change the Resource Conservation District to a Resource Conservation and Parks. Currently, our Resource Conservation District is not being used properly. Just areas that, if we were going to use it in the way that it was intended, there's areas that it should be in, and there's areas that it shouldn't be in. So it's just, it's a bit of a inefficient district at this point in time. One area identified was that we don't have a strict parks district. So the thought was that switching this district to a Resource Conservation and Parks, able to keep a lot of the same language that's on our zoning map, things like that, but incorporates them more for a park, city-owned parks specifically. So just clarifying the intent, the permitted uses, conditional uses, some of the branding standards in this ordinance. And then after this is adopted, it would be, I guess the next step for this would be to take a look at our zoning map and actually rezone the specific park, park sales to this specific district. So happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Jared. Anybody have any questions on this? Again, we've talked about this quite a bit. Seems to make a lot of sense, and appreciate Jared's work through this whole, this whole effort. No comments? We would like to get a motion to approve then.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Martin, that we approve ordinance number 022023. Any discussion? Barbara Calderon?
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right. Jared, you're not done yet, though. We got ordinance number 032023. This is an amendment to Chapter 17.313, parent 2, parent A of the accessory dwelling units. And again, this is the second reading.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This one starts on page 92. This one is just a cleanup. The planning commission reviewed, and the council approved a change to our lot standards already. There's a section in this accessory dwelling unit section of the code that just kind of reiterates one of those height requirements or height measurement maximums. And so just going back and making it match what was already adopted. So just a cleanup.
All right. Pretty short ordinance. One item on here. Any questions, discussions, motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Peterson, that we approve ordinance number 032023. Any discussion? Barbara Calderon?
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right. And another one for Jared, but also with Matt, our airport FBO here. Ordinance number 042023, amendment of Chapter 17.101. This is creation of a Chapter 17.160, APD Airport District, and repeal of Chapter 17.304 of airports. Also, a second reading. How'd you get all those first readings done in 10 minutes? The last meeting, you guys.
That's a question for Paul.
Jared, go ahead.
This one starts on page 94 of your packets. So a little similar to the, a little bit similar to the parks district. Took a look at our airport, and currently it's zoned agricultural, which under the old zoning code, before we made some substantial modifications, that was an appropriate zoning district. With the changes that have been made, no longer was really a district that fit the airport. Under our new zoning code, it made the most sense, and given the uniqueness of the airport, to make an airport a specific district. This makes it a little easier, as we're not trying to pair the airport with, you know, a convenience store, a grocery store, a single-family home, or agricultural land. It's kind of its own unique community, in a way. And it felt as though it needed its own district to kind of govern the zoning standards for it. So worked with Matt through the process, came up- up with this kind of initial airport zoning district and standards, with the understanding that as our airport continues to grow, as I hope it does, obviously, things may need to be added. We may have things that come up that were just unforeseen. So I think this is a good stab at an initial requirements and zoning district. But again, we may see this back here, as again, I hope to see the airport grow and new things come to it. So happy to take any questions.
All right, thanks, Jared. Matt, you have anything you want to add to that? Okay. Man of many words here. All right, any questions on that? Obviously, we want to take advantage, you know, in years past, and not that long ago, the airport was a drain on our city budget. And we're seeing huge strides, Chairman Hagan. We're seeing huge strides with the airport, and we want to continue to keep that. And we thank Matt for that, but Jared is also helping to make sure that we can be successful out there. So again, I fully recommend this change in zoning for the airport to move in the right direction.
Move to approve ordinance 042023.
Second.
Motion by Dykstra, second by Martin, that we approve ordinance number 042023. Any discussion? Barbara, call her all.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Porchatsky.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, Jared, thank you. Take a breath. Next up, we're into new business. Request by Wapack Community Arts Board, WCAB, for street closures to use of city hall parking lot, use of bandstand, and front lawn for the 17th Annual Arts on the Square and Art Participation Week to be held Sunday, August 13th through Saturday, August 19th, 2023. And Chuck has made it to the podium. So this is Chuck Reynolds. Chuck, you want to tell us a little bit about it?
Sure, and I apologize for my appearance. I was cleaning up Rotary Park, so I'm a little full of mulch. Thanks to the city for dropping off the mulch, by the way. So you should have in front of you the letter that we submitted and a map that kind of shows what's going on. The two most important things to know-
It's on page 100, everybody, if you're not there. Sorry, Chuck.
Thank you. Probably two most important things to know is that the planning for this year is essentially the same as it was for last year. We haven't really introduced any significant changes, and we have reviewed all of this with Justin and Barron's. So it all makes sense from that perspective. With that, would you like me to review the specifics of the map and the road changes, or is it-
So Chuck, are they the same as, you said they were the same as last year?
Same as last year. I think the thing that might be different is the, like a bicycle parade route, which is on the map, indicated by the blue line going on the sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah, and that setup is the same as last year in terms of the major tent, the positioning of porta-potties, the event spaces where the art tents are going to be, et cetera.
All right. So anybody have any questions on this? Anything you want to say about promoting this at all? This is your-
Well, I mean, it's a terrific event. I mean, it's such a great weekend for Wapack with the triathlon and everything else going on that weekend. But we were just delighted with the partnership we have with the city on this great event. Brings a lot of people in. And we're going to have, started off with the Friday Night Street Dances, we normally do. We've got a returning, I think, Mojo and Friends, I think, band that just knocked it out of the park last year. It's going to be a terrific event, so we look forward to seeing as many people there as possible.
Awesome. All right. Again, anybody have any questions or comments? We're looking for a motion to approve.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Dykstra, that we approve the request from the Wapack Community Arts Board for street closures for use of city hall parking lot, use of the bandstand and the front lawn for the 17th Annual Arts on the Square, our Participation Week to be held on Sunday, August 13th through Saturday, August 19th. Any further discussion? Barbara, call her all.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Scott Porchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right. All good to go, Chuck. Thank you for coming tonight.
All right, thank you for your continued partnership.
Thanks. All right, next up, we have a request to block off parking stalls on East Fulton Street. This request actually went to the library, and so, and since it includes street closures, library, of course, brought it to city council for their approval. So I'm going to turn it over to Eric. He has, and he can introduce his guests, too.
Hello. Oh, good heavens, pardon me. Off to a great start. So I'm here this evening with Diane Buddles of the Wapack Classic Car Club. And we are submitting a request to block off the identified parking stalls from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Wednesdays between May 1st to September 30th in 2023. We're on page 103 of the packet. The map is on page 104. So the stalls in question that we're looking at would be the ones on the south side of the street of East Fulton, between Main Street and Jefferson Street. So right out there, basically, just adjacent to the building. Last summer, the Wapack Area Public Library held a very successful classic car program that was held on Main Street. We had a lot of positive feedback, and we had the opportunity to get acquainted with the car club here in Wapack, who are looking for a spot to relocate for their regular meetings. So working together, we identified that there was a good chance for us to work together here on, I think, what we have branded as fun on the front lawn and classic cars out here on the village green, or city green. And the partnership will bring additional activity to downtown during the summer in the evenings, and highlight improvements and amenities that have recently been added. This includes the library's soon-to-be-completed programming cart, which we are in the final, in the last stages of finalizing with a local builder. And we also anticipate offering some active programming on some of the event dates as well. So of course, for the program, the classic cars will need some space to park. And after discussion, we identified the spots marked out as the best location for that. A couple of quick points to highlight before I'll turn things over to Diane. We are not anticipating having food trucks or food vendors out at this time. We are open to the possibility of partnering for food with a vendor at some point in the future, but right now, that's not on the table. And of course, contact with downtown merchants is very important, though a lot of them, we anticipate, will be closed by this time of the day. The event itself will kick off at 6:00 on Wednesday evenings. But we are going to be sending out information to downtown merchants to let them know what we're working on, what it is, and provide an opportunity to ask questions, allay any concerns. So on that note, Diane of the car club.
Thank you. Yes, we're, I'm representing the car club. The men are busy getting their cars ready, so I'm the only one that's brave enough to show up. So, but we do have rules that they have to follow. And I'm sure you have copies of the rules that I submitted. And we will definitely clean up our area when we are finished. We're only going to be there from about 6:00 in the evening till 8:00, and that's only on Wednesday nights through the summer, starting possibly about the 31st of May and running until the end of August, or if the weather permitting, maybe the middle of September, if the city approves it. So if anybody has any questions?
Thank you, Diane. If you have driven up West Fulton Street in the past, in front of Burger King, that's where they were located in the past. They do like the downtown location better, and that's why they're making that request tonight. So they have a pretty good track record in the city of Wapack. We've never had any problems with them, and it's actually pretty cool to see those old cars. So Colin, did you have a comment?
I was going to ask a couple of questions, I guess, if we're ready for that.
Go ahead.
In the letter, I see up top, the hours are from 2:00 to 8:00 as a closure. And then down below, your organization is requesting 6:00 to 8:00.
6:00 to 8:00, yes.
So is it only 6:00 to 8:00, or are you going to block off 2:00 to 8:00 for something else?
Okay, so-
The event would be from 6:00 to 8:00, but needing the stalls for the event, we would anticipate marking those off earlier in the day.
Mm-hmm.
So that we could have those open and ready.
Okay.
That's where the 2:00 to 8:00 comes in. And the library staff is happy to assist with that, with getting out there, since we're already on site, and getting those cones out as needed.
Okay. I guess the reason I'm asking is, is my question is, why don't we close the whole road from 6:00 to 8:00? The businesses at that time are closed. It'll be safer for their group. Was that, is that something we can do to help promote this organization? Maybe not. I don't know.
Well, to close the entire street is, takes council action, so I would need council support. I think, I think we felt at this point, just doing the parking stalls would be enough. And not that they're going to park with the stalls, they would park on an angle to allow a little bit more room and everybody to walk around. So I think at this point, it's kind of one of those, we'll start small and work big kind of movements. So I, I mean, I, it's hard to say if that would be a good thing to close off the entire block at this point. I think we go with just the stalls and see how it works for the summer.
Okay, great.
Anybody else? Any other comments? All right, anybody want to make a motion?
I would be happy to make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, and second by Dykstra, that we approve blocking off the parking stalls on East Fulton Street for the Old Car Club of Wapack. This would be on Wednesdays. The actual event would be from 6:00 to 8:00, but we would start blocking off stalls at 2:00 PM in the afternoon. Any further discussion?
I just had another question.
Yeah, go ahead.
What is considered old? What's the year cutoff? I don't mean that, it just came out.
Anything from 1950s into the 70s, but if there's someone that has newer cars they want to bring, they can, they're welcome to. But as long as they follow the rules, they're welcome.
Thank you.
I'm not going to say anything. Okay. Anybody else? Any other comments? Barbara, call her all.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Porchatsky.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, well, good luck, Diane.
Thank you.
Eric, thanks for the presentation. All right, next up, and he's moving up to the podium here, we have a resolution supporting continuation of childcare counts funding. And this is our grant writer. If everybody has not seen him in a while, this is Greg Gromen, our grant writer.
Good evening, council. As you know, the city of Wapack was the recipient of a DreamUp Childcare Supply Building Grant from the Department of Children's and Families. Last week, Monday, members of the city of Wapack's DreamUp team, some of you are here, hosted a Day Without Childcare, an event to raise awareness about the critical lack of childcare in the Wapack area. This event brought together childcare providers, young parents, members of local government, area employers, to discuss the impacts of the childcare crisis. I was particularly struck to learn during this presentation that every childcare provider in Wapack County has a waitlist. And at Sunny Day, that waitlist is 18 to 24 months. So this shortage of childcare has profound impacts. It means that young parents, especially young women, are leaving their careers to stay at home. It means that area employers are facing critical shortages of employees, impacting their ability to maintain mission-critical operations. And it means that young children are lacking the care needed to foster healthy brain development. So this childcare crisis is too big of an issue for any one organization to address alone. One of the outcomes of the Day Without Childcare event was a commitment to work together to advocate for additional public investment in the childcare industry. We shared a belief then, and now, that when childcare providers have their voices amplified by allies in local government and industry, we believe we can more effectively secure the public investment we need to support the childcare infrastructure we all directly or indirectly benefit from. So before you do tonight, it's a resolution to add the voice of the city of Wapack to this effort. This resolution will be sent to our state legislators alongside letters of support from area employers, young parents, and childcare providers. The goal of this resolution is to call upon our legislators to support a proposed $340 million allocation for a permanent childcare counts investment in the 2023 to 2025 budget. Please let me know if you have any questions, and thank you for your continued interest and support of this effort.
Thank you, Greg. Any comments? Anybody want to make a motion to approve this resolution so that we can send this on to our legislators?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Martin, that we approve Resolution Number 1543. It's a resolution supporting continuation of childcare counts funding. Any further discussion? Barbara, call her all.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Porchatsky.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, Greg, thank you. All right, next up, we have a conditional use permit for KT Real Estate Holdings LLC at 106 County Road, QQ. And this is Jared, this is actually the QuickTrip built the property on corner of QQ and Highway 54 there. And also, if needed, Nick is representing the QuickTrip, and he's in the back row back there. So if you have any questions for him, feel free to ask him to step up to the podium and answer some questions for you. But Jared, go ahead.
Of course, thank you, Mayor. This one starts on page 113 of your packets. Again, this is for the QuickTrip out on QQ, kind of at that main intersection with the bank. There's a multi-tenant commercial structure, and then there is the three squares and mobile across the street. So QuickTrip has been looking to do this project for a while now. Part of the problem was one of the parcels that they owned was in the Tiff District, and the other parcel that they owned was not. So this project entailed combining those parcels, so they actually had to wait till we closed the Tiff District. So I appreciate their patience and thank them very much. We are now at the point where they have combined the parcels. That has been completed and recorded. We're now at the point of issuing the conditional use permit. Site plan permit was already approved contingent upon the approval of the conditional use, conditional use permit by the Plan Commission. But this conditional use permit is just really restating the boundaries of their now newly expanded parcel, since they've combined two parcels. And then it is for an expanded diesel pump and canopy, as well as underground fuel storage. So just accommodating essentially a canopy and pump extension is what this is for. So staff recommended approval, and Plan Commission recommended approval as well.
All right. Thank you, Jared. Anybody have any questions, comments? Any questions for Nick? He drove all this way, and he's, he said he's okay if he doesn't have to answer questions.
He's okay.
We'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Porchatsky, that we approve the conditional use permit for KT Real Estate Holdings LLC. Any discussion? Barbara, call her all.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, thanks, Barb. Nick, thank you very much for coming tonight. All right, next up, Jared, you are a busy man here. Uh, conditional use permit, A&amp;N Wapaka LLC, seven oh one South Industrial Drive.
Thank you very much. This one starts on page one twenty-three of your packets. Uh, this is for, um, the multi-tenant structure, um, on the corner of Roylton and Industrial. Uh, the current businesses in there are Wapaka Rentals, uh, Wapaka Rental Center, sorry, BZ Consortium, uh, Fastenal, and then, uh, Hecky's Computer Repair. So, um, this building, uh, parcel, actually similar to QuickTrip, uh, just recently expanded their parcel. They had purchased some land from the city, um, to, uh, do some additional, I don't, or do some additional, um, parking, uh, and possible structures on their parcel. So with that expansion, we are, um, you know, they are coming back to update their conditional use to include that entire parcel. Um, the other element is, um, we are looking to not only, this conditional use is not only for Wapaka Rental Center, which is the, uh, sales service repair of construction equipment and similar equipment, uh, but also Fastenal and BZ Consortium, which are wholesalers. Uh, so wholesalers within our, uh, B four district, uh, strip commercial district also require a conditional use. Um, so, uh, it is Wapaka Rental Center, BZ Consortium, and Fastenal, which are all current tenants, um, operating out of that building and have been for a while now, um, are coming forward just for this updated conditional use.
Thanks, Jared. So again, this is just a cleanup here, is what we're trying to do here. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion by Martin, second by Peterson, that we approve of the conditional use permit for A&amp;N Wapaka LLC, which is located at seven oh one South Industrial Drive. Any discussion? Barb will call the roll.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right. Jared, thank you for that. Uh, next up, we have a condominium plot for Russ Young Properties LLC, which is on Hart Court, you know, where that is, right off of Western Avenue, if you go past the, the, uh, McDonald's down at the far end. Jared, this is you. We do have, uh, Barb Young here and also her partner, uh, Ed Darvin, is that right? Jim Darvin. Sorry about that. Have a good memory, it's just short. Uh, Jared, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, this one starts on page one thirty-one, um, on one thirty-one, it is a, the entire condo plat. Um, the documents to follow that are just some of the house renderings and, uh, elevations, so, um, good visuals there. Uh, but this condo plat is for a six-unit, uh, single-family, um, each unit will be a single-family unit, uh, but six-unit condo plat, um... Again, looking at the elevations and the, uh, layouts that are actually on the condo condominium plat itself, uh, they appear to be very, very nice, um, structures. Um, so super excited to see some continued housing in this area. It is a beautiful area, so, um, whoever moves into these will be very pleased. And we are super excited to see more housing. Definitely a need in Wapaka.
Thank you, Jared. And we have a relationship with Barb, of course, too. Barb is, uh, they've built out, uh, the subdivision, what's it, what's the road again? Backside? Yeah, Sunridge, back in there. So Barb, do you wanna make any comments? Jim? Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions for Barb?
Just excited.
Yeah?
Just excited.
This is a good project.
It's wonderful.
Uh, I, so we need to approve this condominium plat, so, uh, we would be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion by Olson, and second by Chestnut, that we approve the condominium plat for Russ Young Properties LLC, which is on, uh, Hart Court. Any other discussion? Barb will call the roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Council members.
Thanks, Barb. Jim? Thank you very much. Good luck to you. All right, just a note to everybody, we are gonna take a short, uh, break, uh, after, uh, H, uh, right before the presentation by the Sholki, Sholki Properties, so about a five-minute break in between there. So we need two more, we gotta get through here. Uh, and the first one is an appointment, uh, to the Library Board, so I'll turn that over to our council president, Paul Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor would like to appoint Melanie Peterson to the Library Board. At this time, I need a motion and a second to approve this appointment.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Velicker, second by Chestnut, to approve the mayor's appointment of Melanie Peterson to the Library Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Motion carries. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Paul. Great job, as always. Uh, next up is, uh, resolution number fifteen forty-one. This was a public hearing earlier. It's a preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special assessments under municipal police power pursuant to section sixty-six point zero seven zero three of the state statutes, uh, and it pertains to, uh, replacement of sidewalks. Justin?
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, so as the mayor alluded to, this is related or is the, uh, regards to the public hearing, our sidewalk assessments, so the table should look the same. Uh, this is the property owner share, the fifty-fifty. This is an estimate. After we complete the work, we will take actual measurements and, uh, come up with an actual assessment, which we share with, with Barb, the clerk. Further below is a little more details on, on the project, the cost per square foot, so five-inch concretes, eight dollars, seven-inch concretes, nine dollars. And like I said, we measure and then we make our assessments off of that. This is part of just the plan, so we put together, um, some more information. We share that with Barb as well, and, uh, if anybody requests, they can see all this information. And so this is preliminary. On the next meeting, we will have a final, which then will require action.
All right, thanks. Everybody understand? Looking for a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Chestnut.
Second?
Second by Peterson, uh, to approve resolution number fifteen forty-one. Discussion? Barb will call the roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, Justin, thank you. Uh, at this time, we'll, we'll recess for five minutes. That will give them a chance to set up and also ask to get a little, uh, drink of water, stretch their legs.
Fucking brewers and, you know.
Oh, yeah. Important stuff.
Is it under sixteen, though?
I don't know. I haven't even looked at it. Well, of course, it has to be the Cardinals, too.
Just to make sure. Rot some burgers, I'm hungry.
All right, we're back in, uh, open session. So we have, uh, a presentation tonight from, uh, Sholki Properties LLC for a development, uh, at two twenty-three South Division Street. And of course, we all remember that as the, uh, Saint Mary's, uh, property. Uh, and with us tonight, we have Tim, of course, who's standing at the podium. Ed Fisher is with us. Uh, James Olson, and then, uh, Allison Burnett is also with us. Allison is a former city administrator, is that right?
No, I never read it that far, before I retired.
Okay.
I was a planner and a planning and economic.
Okay, city planner, okay. So she's been helpful through the whole thing here, too. Aaron, I, I don't know if you wanna go ahead and set it up?
Sure. Uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, so I will not speak much, 'cause I have a ton of information, as you guys probably saw on the slides, but I do wanna say that this conversation has been going on for several months. Uh, I believe that, you know, we've been updating city council through either monthly reports or the newsletter or whatever it may be. Um, I can tell you that, from a city staff perspective, the direction has never really changed from the developers, Sholki Properties, BTS Development Group. Uh, what you see tonight, um, has always been, uh, I mean, pretty darn close to the plan. If anything, I would say the final product probably has, um, improved, uh, over time, uh, from, from what I, uh, saw originally. I think, I also wanna just talk to, you know, it's always great when there's no surprises and there's not changes in direction, and that's not easy from, uh, from an environment that we're in, from both financing and construction costs, uh, it's challenging that way. Steps, you know, they've taken some extra steps, which you'll hear about tonight through the deconstruction process. That's a unique process, given, uh, that it's obviously a church that's sentimental to some. Uh, I think that was very important. Uh, also, you'll see that they're reusing some of that material within this development, which is pretty neat, and they'll talk about that. I also wanna just give a little bit of kinda perspective, and, and it's, you know, this is a site that's been sitting vacant for over twenty years. Uh, there was numerous, uh, RFPs that were sent out, uh, over the course of that twenty years to see if, uh, um, development could happen and if it could be saved and reused in its current structure. Uh, the numbers were never there to make that work. On top of the RFP, there was a, um, feasibility study, uh, that was done, as you guys all know, from, uh, the Arts and Culture Group, and they ended up saying it, it didn't work because of the numbers and the condition of the building, and they're now, uh, very happy with where they're at in the Methodist Church and providing awesome services there. While this thing aged, obviously, there's, the unwanted activity only increased over time, uh, and it became, uh, something that our police department, uh, did have to keep an eye on more often than we'd want. And then that brings us to really where we're at now, May of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, we are pushing up against a deadline if the city, uh, is, was to help in move this property forward. Our deadline to help in that is June of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, and I know that that's what, uh, Sholki Properties and BTS Development are here to present, uh, their proposal for that and a formal request for that. But, uh, I know their first part will be all about the project, and then we'll get into the development agreement after. So with that, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. Mayor Smith. Uh, council members and, uh, everyone else, thank you very much for having us here. I'm Tim Sholki, Sholki Properties, and then also representing BTS Development Group, um, as a member. Um, so BTS Development Group was founded in two thousand twenty-one with the goal to repurpose challenging sites and bring more housing products to market in northeast Wisconsin. A hundred-plus new units coming to market through two thousand twenty-four with additional sites under contract. Uh, we have projects in Appleton, Kakona, Manitowoc, Nina, Two Rivers, and of course, uh, Wapaka. Uh, the development company structure, so I'm Tim Sholki, managing member of Sholki Properties. Um, there are three family members in the Sholki Properties LLC. Um, Sholki Properties is the owner and manager of two-two-three Division Street. Um, we've also formed a development company, um, seeing, seeing the need of the housing. We formed BTS Development Group, which I am the managing member. Uh, Ed Fisher is a member, Allison Burnett is a member, and James Olson is a consultant, along with Dan Meiser, who's not here.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry. And, uh, Dan Meiser is, uh, an architectural consultant for our, our group. Um, I will hand it over to Allison to explain more.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's so nice to be here, um, really excited to be here. We were kind of reminiscing on the drive up this evening that, um, the last time I was here was Saint Patrick's Day of last year, and it was the first time I'd walked through the church. So it just feels like it's been simultaneously thirty seconds and thirty years, so thank you. Um, as Mayor said, I, uh, come to this development group with a little bit of a unique experience. I was a city planner and a planning and economic development director down in the Fox Valley, had a ten-year career in public service, and, uh, pivoted, as many people did in the last few years. And now I run an organizational development consulting company and actually met Tim and Ed when they were developers in Kakona. So I had the chance to work with them on your side of the table, and I really appreciated the fact that Tim and his family are such high-quality property managers. They're invested long-term, and honestly, they were phenomenal to work with. So when they approached me after I left city government and said, would you like to get involved? I didn't even have to think about it, because, you know, for every good developer, there's about twenty, maybe shady ones. So it was a real pleasure to work with him on the city government side, and I was really excited about his vision for, uh, beginning to chip away at this housing crisis we're facing in the state of Wisconsin. So what sets us apart from every other developer that maybe has come before you in the past? Well, a couple things. We have a really unique background here within our organization. We have Tim, whose family has been invested in property management for decades and is now, since there's nothing left to buy, moving into adaptive reuse projects, buying buildings that can be saved and converting them from commercial uses, which we'll show you some pictures of those in forthcoming slides, and converting them to multifamily, as well as, this is kinda where I come in and where architects come into the process, finding the sites that have less competition because they're difficult. Either they have buildings that are very difficult to remove, whether there's conservation easements or environmental contamination, or they're just tricky sites, bless you, often in a downtown area that maybe they're a tight site, maybe they have environmental concerns or traffic concerns. You know, we like to kinda find the sites that maybe nobody else is really interested or up for the challenge. We are, and we take a very patient approach. We go into this knowing it might be sixteen months between walking the site and coming in with a final development agreement. So this approach, um, we've found that it's served us well, and honestly, we've just found we can wait out a lot of the competition if we find sites that we believe in, we're passionate about their impact and what they can do in communities. And we really strive to hold hands with city leaders, too. I knew that when I sat on your side of the table and city government, I really appreciated when developers came in and listened about what community needs were, community wants, and didn't just come in with a plan and said, this is what we're building, take it or leave it, but really said, we wanna hear what you want and what you need. And we try to be so mindful of what each community's unique needs are. Obviously, housing is a common denominator, but what are those needs? And how can we best design our product to fit not only the market needs, but the look in the field, the community that we're coming into? So we strongly believe this sets us apart from many other developers in the landscape, and we're thrilled to be here tonight to talk to you about the Saint Mary's Church site. And I'm gonna turn it over to Jim to give a bit of background on the history and the condition of that structure.
Hello, folks. James Olson here, and, uh, uh, happy to be a part of this team. Uh, I've been a, I've been a architectural designer and developer for my entire career and have delivered, uh, well, acquired and, and, uh, and helped to design and delivered more than two billion dollars worth of, uh, projects that, uh, very often have spanned the, the, the divide between the public and the private sector. And so I know, I know, uh, what must be done in order to be able to get approval, not only approval, but, but really, uh, investment from the, from the public sector, to be able to achieve some of these things. The site that we're talking about here, of course, is the Saint Mary Magdalene, uh, former Catholic Church site. And, uh, you know, I think the thing that I would say about, about a site like this is that it, it's, it, it's difficult because it's a revered site. It, it's meant so much to the community, both as, uh, as a, a church, a learning center, uh, a beautiful structure, frankly. And yet, of course, it has been unoccupied for more than two decades. And so when we look at it from a development standpoint, we, we don't wish to simply demolish the building. We wish to repurpose it. Now, that doesn't mean that we're repurposing the entire building, but it does mean, and we'll show you as we go on here, how we will use a good deal of the materials and the elements of that building further in design and in development. We know that, that, that your community has got a need for, for multifamily housing, and that's a good part of, of why it is that we looked at this site directly. And the Shulkey family, of course, are property owners here in the, in the community and are really dedicated to doing something of, of high quality for the, for the city of Wapaka here. That being said, let's, let's move on one more here. This is the former church site, and of course, the, one of the things that you note immediately is the really beautiful stonework that this church is built from. And it's not just stonework for the, for the exterior of the building. It actually is structural stone, and that's a good part of what it is that we will adaptively reuse in our, in our new development. Go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, Jim. My name is Ed Fisher. I'm an architectural consultant. I work with Dan Meiser, the architect. So what we're, as Jim has spoken about, adaptive reuse of some of the materials, we are trying to use the stone mainly from, from the building to enhance our, the appeal of our building. The building itself will have either stone or brick at the base all the way around the building for maintenance purposes. And then there's vertical battened siding on the upper levels, and there's patio decks and maintenance-free decking and aluminum railing for every apartment, all 30 of them. The 20 private garages have 20 parking spaces adjacent to each of those garages, and then the rest are additional parking spaces. Thanks. Here's a, a few renderings of what the building's going to look like. The middle one is the backside garages, and we tried to keep all of the parking, the garages, the, the ugly side of apartment living inside the, the footprint of the site itself so that everything on the street is, is new. Next one, please. We keep, are only providing one sample of an end unit in this publication. We're trying to keep some of our ideas to ourselves, let's say. So this is the first-floor unit. Will have access to Badger Street through the great room, through the patio, and zero, zero entry. So though there are not too many ADA accessible units, they are quite adaptable for someone who's, has some physical disabilities. Here's a 3D renderings of additional work that was done by one of our artists. And the site, we originally were trying to get traffic flow onto, what is this, State Street to the east? But realized there's a retaining wall there and a lot, and much more traffic. So we have a two-way drive that accesses Division Street. And Allison will take over.
Thank you.
Thank you. So in terms of designing this product, we really wanted to be mindful of what the needs were here in Wapaka. And we heard overwhelmingly, we were able to review the very helpful housing study that was completed last spring and shared with our team, that there's a need for folks who are either looking to exit homeownership and take advantage of this ideal real estate market, or those who are trying to enter homeownership and are struggling with the competitive landscape, not only now for interest rates, but fighting cash offers, fighting no contingencies. It's a horrible time to try to be a homeowner, but a great time to be selling your home. So we are really targeting those on either end of the age spectrum, young professionals that maybe have career opportunities at the number of industries here in Wapaka, want to be in this community, maybe they're coming home from college, starting a family, but they just haven't yet been able to find that home that they can own. So we are a bridge product for them. We also want to help meet the needs of folks who are aging out of wanting to deal with the inconveniences of homeownership. Maybe they don't want to deal with snow removal, lawn maintenance, et cetera. There are a limited number of these products, like we saw this evening with the condominium plaque coming online, that remain owner-occupied and have perhaps a lesser degree of maintenance, but providing a bridge before folks truly need an assisted living or independent living product to still have a market-rate product, which is much more affordable per month than some of those assisted living options. As Ed had mentioned, all of the first-floor units are zero entry, which is a great amenity for those who maybe have limited mobility. We also have 100% pet-friendly units. We know that that's really important to many people, especially for those that are downsizing out of a house. Maybe they're empty nesters, but that just means that their kids left. They still maybe have their furry family members. We loved the downtown adjacent location of this site. We really feel that it offers the best of the ability to live, work, and play here in Wapaka. And we've done our best, despite market conditions, which we'll get into further details on our financial analysis slides, to keep the rents within reason. Obviously, affordability is relative to what someone makes, what they can afford to spend on housing expenditures on a monthly basis. But we've been balancing not only increasing interest rates on the banking side of things, but also a really tricky construction market. So it's been this balancing act of figuring out, how do we bring the highest-quality product to market that fits the amenities of this site and make sure that it still is within reason for rents? We anticipate the rents for our two-bedroom units to start at $1,300 a month at this time. I'm going to now switch over to Tim so he can share with you some examples of products that have already been executed by our team so you can get a little bit more of a flavor of what our downtown products look like.
So we listed a couple of our recent projects. Most recently is the Carnegie Apartments located in the heart of Kakona. This is a 12,000-square-foot building that we converted into eight luxury apartments on the back end and the front end is some commercial space. You can kind of see the, the middle is, was wide open, and we filled it in to complete the eight apartments. And there is the updated, most recent updated picture of how the building turned out exterior-wise. Another recent project, Briar Cliff Apartments. This was a 35,000-square-foot former nursing facility. We converted this into 41 apartments. This was done in the south end of Appleton, which is growing market for apartments. And this was completed near the end of the pandemic time. And these are some interior photos of the finished product.
Just a note, too, I'm particularly passionate about that Kakona Carnegie Lofts product because that was a building and a development that I worked with Tim on. That was a former Carnegie library. So the front half of that building is actually listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and we went through a very lengthy process of establishing conservation easements to protect the historic integrity of the front of that building, which will be future commercial space, while maximizing the completely nonhistoric, very architecturally not worthy 1970s edition that was totally brick and concrete. So it's addressing a housing shortage, working on a really difficult site to reuse. So that's just really, in a nutshell, what BTS is all about. Taking those sites that require a little bit more work and creative thinking and putting that elbow grease to work to bring great products to communities. So let's get back to Wapaka. What impact will this project have on your community? We understand that when you support a project like this, you have to be able to explain to your constituents why it is in the best interest of the community and your taxpayers to support a project like this. For starters, the obvious is this site has for many years remained non-taxable or generating a low tax value. Right now, the assessed valuation is at $80,000. We are going to invest $3.9 million in hard construction costs that excludes our soft costs, which don't typically have a direct correlation to assessed valuation in this facility within the next nine months. We are estimating that this will generate somewhere between $2.1 to $2.9 million in new taxable value. It's a little bit of a tricky situation to estimate exactly what that looks like. We typically operate off of a percentage of construction costs, but with the fluctuations in construction supplies right now, it's really hard to nail down what that number looks like exactly. But we feel confident that the numbers reflected in the development agreement are conservative and that assessed value will actually come in above that. As we will detail further, we are really being thoughtful in how we repurpose the existing structural materials. We actually took a more expensive approach in deconstruction versus demolition, which we will share with you shortly about the contractor that we're working with and why it might seem like it's taking a very long time to take down the building. And lastly, really ensuring that we have a mindful design that fits the context of downtown Wapaka. So just a quick summary of our timeline. We were last all here as a team in February of 20, I'm sorry, that should actually be March. March of 2022, which was the first point where Tim had the church under contract, and we went through quite an extensive due diligence period from March of that year through October, really weighing different potential uses. We did not come into this sold on, this will definitely be a full apartment development. We considered a mixed-use commercial and apartment product. And we also had fairly lengthy conversations with some interested owners and investors in your market that were looking for owner-occupied luxury condominiums. And we ran a number of different performas, we met with different lenders. Condominiums, for many reasons, are particularly tricky to finance on the banking side, but we did extensive due diligence and really decided that from a numbers standpoint and to bring a product to market soon, apartments did make the most sense. But we built invaluable connections in this market with folks who are looking to buy condos, and we do hope that this is not our first and last project in Wapaka. So once we settled last fall on our current use, we went through a design process. City staff was incredibly helpful in helping us understand what are the amenities that this market wants, again, taking a deep dive into that housing study to understand what competitor products or older products in the market have so that we could differentiate. We began the deconstruction process this spring. That will be completed by late, hopefully, mid-June, and construction will begin. When we say construction, we mean site work as the first starting point, then leading to foundations, et cetera. But we have an aggressive construction timeline. Our contractor is really eager to get to work, so we are still aiming for final occupancy being granted in January of 2024. Now, let's take a little bit of a microscope to what that looks like for this calendar year. So through this winter and early spring, we went through the approval process. So those of you who serve on the Plan Commission likely sat through understanding what our development plan looked like in detail. We also had some extensive meeting with city staff to understand other departments' thoughts or concerns that related to this development site. We are now in Phase 2, which is the deconstruction, and then we will move in, in June next month into construction, which will wrap in December of this year, if all goes well. And we are, will be working on finishes and granting final occupancy, marketing the properties, and hopefully having people move into them as soon as early 2024. And I kind of covered this already, so just talking a little bit about how we identified other potential uses, but really felt that from a numbers standpoint and in order to bring a product to market soon, that this just made the most sense to move forward with a multifamily product for this site. But we have been in touch with city staff, and we are definitely keeping a close eye on what other sites may come available. From a property management standpoint, on behalf of Shulkey Properties, it makes a lot of sense to have more than one property in your footprint. So since they already own some vacation rentals in the greater Wapaka area and will now have this property in their portfolio, definitely very interested in continued investment in this market. I'm going to turn it over to Jim to talk about the design process and bring you up to speed on deconstruction.
Well, as we have said, we worked together with, with the city leaders here to, to really talk through the site, the materials that existed in the existing building that we could, we could use, and therefore, as we have defined it, deconstruct the building rather than demolish the building. We did not want to turn this building into a landfill. We wish to really recapture a good deal of the materials that were really quite extraordinary within it and, and certainly reuse the, the stone that, that is beautiful on the exterior of the building, but also wood products that, that, that I'll talk about in a little bit and, and many other things. We are working with a company out of Kenosha called Recycline, and they have specialized for about the last five years in literally deconstruction as opposed to demolition of buildings. And what they do is repurpose all of the materials or as much of the materials from a building that they literally deconstruct, that they then resell to nonprofit organizations and, I mean, other profitable builders that, that then our development company can take a tax write-off on. And it's, it's really a wonderful way to approach buildings of, of this beauty and this, this historical context. Well, that pretty well speaks for what's up there now, deconstruction versus demolition. As I said, you know, a lot of what will be taken from the building and repurposed will be sold to nonprofit organizations that will reuse it for, for other projects. As I said, Recycline has worked since 2018 on this very type of work. And you can see on the right, all of the materials that we believe will be adaptively reused from this existing building. And there's a, a couple of images of the site. You can see on the left, those are doors that have already been taken off and, and packaged for repurposing. The upper one is wood that has been taken down from the attic space and, and set up so that it can be resold, and some of the other interior spaces that were removing floors and other, other elements of the building. And of course, the beautiful stone that the building is built from.
We will be introducing Hudson Knox Construction. They are working with Recycline, coordinating efforts to bring us to our starting, start of construction. Of course, once we get permits and those good things. Andrew Atrovich was part of Rodak Construction in Green Bay, a very well-known company that builds, they do a lot of medical. Andrew decided to go out on his own with some of his consultants and is, does a very nice job. They're building condominiums that he had started a few years ago in the design process. They're located on the Fox River in Green Bay. I believe they're all sold, all 17. We're very excited to have Andrew with us and hope to have him around as long as we can continue moving forward.
Okay, so I'm going to do a few slides here in open session, and then we will disconnect, and Aaron will take it from here into closed session. We have some additional slides that were just a little bit of proprietary information that we didn't want to have included in the public packet. We hope you'll understand that. Okay, so as I noted, this is a $4.5 million total project cost. Of that, 3.9 is our hard construction cost, which will directly have a correlation to the assessed valuation. It also includes the $640,000 of soft costs and site prep. As we noted, we chose to go the deconstruction route, which was quite a bit more expensive. There is the opportunity for some tax credit gain, not for BTS, but for Shulkey Properties to have, once the deconstruction materials are repurposed. It's a complicated appraisal IRS thing, I don't get involved. But we're excited about the fact that those materials will not be landfilled and that we can. excited about the fact that those materials will not be landfilled and that we can reintegrate, particularly that stone, into the facade of the property. The deconstruction route is more costly, though, but we really felt with the importance, the significance of the architectural value, the community value of this space, it was just the right thing to do was to repurpose rather than demolish. So that did incorporate some additional costs. We also have just found asbestos everywhere. You know, with a building of that age, you expect some, but it just seems like we keep finding it. We pull up carpet, there's more. So we have, to this point, spent about $50,000 on asbestos remediation, so that did increase from where we originally estimated, but we are hoping that we have found it all now. And we also have ran into an unanticipated need for a utility relocation. There was a utility that had been placed across private property lines rather than the right-of-way. This had been across the parking lot of the former church, so it likely had not been an issue for many, many years, but it would create an issue with the footprint of the new development. So we are going to be working with WPS to privately fund that utility relocation this summer. As we noted, we do take a very patient approach in development, and that's a gamble because the market can change pretty significantly. Since we started having conversations last year, our price per square foot in construction has gone up $37.50. So this has increased the total cost of our project construction by $1.75 million. So we really feel we're doing the project right, and we're building a quality development that will stand the test of time, but it has gotten trickier to accomplish that. So how have we tried to address that? Well, I'm going to cover what's on the right first. Initially, we had really hoped to bring a market-rate product that still had a luxury look and feel closer to $1,000 a month, but it is a balancing act in order to create a performa that a bank will finance, that covers your debt and also covers rising construction costs and the interest rate that's worth facing. So we do feel that $1,400 to $1,500 is really the market ceiling that rents can support in Opaaca. That's not something everyone can afford, but we feel confident that there are at least 30 households or prospective renters that can afford a price point around $1,300 a month. So we did inch our rents up in order to make our performa work. Really, the main reason, it was not so much the construction costs that really led for the need to that, but the significant jump in interest rates on construction financing over the last year. When we first started having these conversations and when we first started running analysis, we were looking at construction loan rates at 4%. It's nearly doubled since that time. That has added approximately $1.4 to $1.8 million. The reason it's a range is every time the interest rates change, I update the performa, and I have a handy little calculator to see how much more expensive it's getting. We have just seen that unprecedented escalation in interest rates with the goal of slowing inflation to have a really costly impact on projects like this. That said, crazy people like us are still building because there is this housing need. So, you know, I don't work for the Federal Reserve, but we'd really like for them to slow down on the interest rate increases. So I'm just going to turn it over for Tim for our final slide in open session, just to talk a little bit about how our firm's structure works and how our ownership approach has really allowed us to keep our development costs down on the front end.
So basically, our firm's difference, a cooperative approach. Unlike many of our competitors, our firm uses a cooperative approach where the development team takes an ownership position in the long term. This helps to keep soft costs on the front end of a project manageable and allows us to work on a costly and challenging site. And that is our presentation. Any questions?
Thanks, Tim. Laurie, go ahead.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment, and that's how excited I was when I read through this earlier, that you're kind of, you know, the stone is going to go, the way you're handling everything. And I think for the people, that's a soothing process. So thank you.
Well, you know, my family, the first time that we saw the church and we saw the for-sale sign, that was, it was a moment that we knew that we wanted to do something with that property, and we're just, we're very happy to be at this point. It took us a while, but here we are.
Any other questions or comments before we go into closed session? No? All right, sounds good. At this time, then, I would entertain a motion to convene into closed session.
Motion to convene into closed session.
Second.